Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. And I'd ask everybody to remain muted unless they're called upon to speak. Lost my page. Excuse me. It is April 21st at 5:30 PM. This is a remote meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. And sorry, lost my attachment there. In accordance with the provisions allowed by the Chapter 20 Acts of 2022, the actually 2021, the April 21st, 2022 Public Meeting of the Planning Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash Lake Cam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date. For the record, I have Michelle McCracken present. I have Peter Conroy present. I have Jack Lynch present. Mark Resnick, our Town Planner, is present. I also have Amy Questle, Town Council, present. And I do not see our clerk or Nora Klein present at this time. Actually, is that Nora's iPad that I see? So Nora Klein may be present.
Yes, I am here.
Thank you, Nora. So the first item on our agenda is this discussion concerning the removal of Section 7.9, the Development Opportunities District from the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw. The Board's vote on April 14th, 2022, and any other action related to this section will be discussed. I believe that that item was not properly put on the agenda and voted on on the April 14th meeting. So to ratify that vote, I had it added to tonight's agenda. So to recap, on April 14th, Michelle McCracken made a motion to eliminate the Development Opportunities District, and it was seconded by Nora Klein. There was a majority vote to post for a public hearing to continue that action. Seeing as I have the luxury of having Amy Questle from Town Council present, I'd actually like you to, if you could, Amy, weigh in on my actions tonight, and if anything else needed to be done to make this correct.
Sure. And so, so thank you for having me. It's, it's, it's nice to see everyone again. And Nora, in a different role than usual. I usually see you at DBA. So because the, the subject was not on the agenda for April 14th, I think, and so then, so it was put on the agenda for tonight, and you are going to discuss removing, a zoning amendment to remove the DO district. So I don't, don't know if you want me to go into the mechanics for doing that, or how that can be done at this point. But in my opinion, any defect that happened on April 14th by taking a vote that was not on the agenda is being corrected tonight. So whatever happened on April 14th will become null and void because of the properly noticed meeting tonight.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, then could you give us a brief summary of what the Planning Board's actions should be to carry this out?
Sure. So so we're in a little bit of a we're in a little bit of a difficult position because of the fact that we have town meeting, I think it's May 16th this year. But that town meeting, that warrant has opened and closed. And so no, no action that's voted on tonight will be taken up in May, at the May Town Meeting.
Correct. It's a thing that would have to hold another public hearing.
Oh, yes.
One or so.
Yes.
To get on Fall Town Meeting, but
Correct.
The board members that wanted to do this wanted to take that action now.
Right. So, so, so May is out. So we're looking at the fall. We're looking at the Fall Town Meeting, which I went back. So, so I do just want to let everyone know that I spoke with Mark about this at 3 o'clock today. So so I haven't done it. I'm not as I don't, I don't, I didn't, I wasn't able to do as much research as I would normally do, you know, to be prepared for a meeting. So I do apologize for that. But it appears that the Fall Special Town Meeting is always in November, and it appears that it's usually around the 15th of November. So second, maybe second or third week of November. So what has to be done now is that the Board would vote to make this an article for the Fall Town Meeting and submit that to the Select Board. Pursuant to the, pursuant to the general bylaw, and I think it's it's general bylaw. I think it's Section 2 of your general bylaws that regulates town meeting. And that requires that any I'm just scrolling up to it. Yes, it is. A Chapter 2 of the general bylaws require that any article that goes on the warrant has to be put on the warrant by the Select Board. So that war, so and then when we combine that with Chapter 40A, Section 5, which is the section of the Zoning Act that regulates zoning amendments, that requires that once the Select Board sends the article to the Planning Board, the Planning Board has 65 days to hold a public hearing. You hold the public hearing, and it's pretty much, you know, 40A, Section 11 notice provisions where you have to have it advertised in the newspaper for two weeks. So you advertise it in the newspaper for two weeks, and then you hold your hearing. And when that hearing closes, you have to make your report within 21 days. And if you do not make your report within 21 days, Town Meeting can still act on the, can still act on the article. That doesn't mean that your report has to be made within 21 days. It just means that if for some reason Town Meeting happens within that 21 days, Town Meeting can happen, but there, there really is no consequence if your report is late and it goes to Town Meeting. I suggest that if you guys vote to do something within 21 days, you just submit something to the Town Clerk saying, here is the Planning Board report on this article. But we can deal with that later. And so so, you know, everything is, everything is fine. Everything can, can be done. The, the problem that we might run up against is that any Planning Board recommendation is only good for six months. So if the Fall Town Meeting is not going to happen until November, because we have this notice period of two weeks, I, I think you're going to be fine. I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna run into that six months, but we do need to take that into, into consideration, just because I think it's going to be close. And so if you would like me to get into the into the, the impact of the zoning change, I can also do that if you would like, or.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I would like that.
Sure. So so a zoning amendment is, becomes effective when it is voted by Town Meeting. So we have Section 5, 40A, Section 5, that specifically states that a zoning amendment becomes effective upon the vote of Town Meeting or City Council. But we then have Section, we have Chapter 40, Section 32, which says that the Attorney General has to review and approve all zoning amendments. And so there's, there's a, there's a disconnect there between the two statutes. And so essentially, the way that that has been interpreted is that the zoning amendment becomes effective upon the Town Meeting vote. And any, you know, anything that happens between the Town Meeting vote and the Attorney General approving the zoning amendment is done at the, at the person's own risk. In a, in a situation like this, where, you know, it's a removal of a, of a zoning district, I, I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the Attorney General disapproving that because that it's the removal of a zoning district. So but anyway, so I just wanted to make that, just because a lot of people are not clear whether the zoning amendment takes place when Town Meeting votes, or is it when the Attorney General approves it? And it is, it's enacted when it's voted, but everything can change once the Attorney General approves it or disapproves it. But so, so that's where we are. We then have vested rights, which are also called freezes. And so the vested rights are anyone that has a special permit or a building permit prior to the first public hearing notice of the Chapter 40A, Section 5 Planning Board Public Hearing, the zoning amendment will not apply to them. So anyone that right now is holding a special permit or is holding a building permit, then they are, this, this zoning amendment will not affect them. And so those are the, those are what we call the vested rights. The freeze protections are a little bit different, and the freeze protections are anyone that files a preliminary subdivision plan for they, for a parcel of land. If they file that prior to the vote of Town Meeting, then they, if they file, if they then file, within seven months, file a definitive plan, definitive subdivision plan, they then are protected for eight years. There's an eight-year freeze. And that freeze applies to use and dimensions, you know, everything. If someone files a, an A&R plan, as you know, under, under an A&R Plan Approval Not Required Plan under Chapter 41, Section 81P, if they file that prior to Town Meeting, then they, they are protected. The use is protected, only the use, for three years. So so there are, there are these, these zoning freezes that, that, that people do tend to take advantage of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that said, Michelle, you had made a motion at the 14th, April 14th meeting. Would you like to remake a motion to this effect?
Thank you, Amy, for all that explanation. And I would like to make a motion to ratify the vote from 4/14 for the public, the Planning Board to hold a public hearing in regards to the removal of the Development Upstate New District.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
All right. And Amy, do you say that that's a satisfactory motion for the purposes of what we're doing?
Do, I do. So I think the next step then would be to send that, to send that article to the Select Board to be, to be put on, put on the Fall Town Meeting warrant.
I have something written. Do you want me to read that? For the article, just a simple one sentence, to see if the town will vote to remove in its entirety Section 7.9 Development Opportunities, the DO District from the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw, or to take any other action there too.
And so, Amy, would you say that's satisfactory article for the?
That sounds fine as a placeholder. Yep. I mean, obviously, the, the Board of Selectmen will then send it back to you guys where you have to make a recommendation on it. And as you know, during that recommendation process, there's some, sometimes there's tweaks.
Understood. Thank you. All right. So I have a motion and a second. Michelle, did you have another comment?
Oh, I was just gonna ask, but go ahead with the vote. Oh.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Peter?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
And myself, a vote aye. So motion carries unanimously that this process will continue for the removal of the Development Opportunities District. That said, the next item on our agenda is to discuss possible changes to the rules and regulations relating to the Development Opportunities District, which are, my intent was to discuss amending the dimensional requirements on the Development Opportunities District. So I guess just to be clear, Amy, we had an opinion, I think, from you that was, actually, I think it was circulated to the Building Commissioner regarding the posting on that, because this is actually in the Development Opportunities District language under 7.9.6E Dimensional Provisions. This Special Permit Granting Authority may adopt regulations relative to the densities of land use, the bulk and height of structures, yard size, lot area setbacks, open spaces, parking, use of signs and other dimensional criteria. So to be clear, we did that actually because we didn't have dimensional requirements previously, and we had adopted them with 48 hours' notice because it is called out in the bylaw. So it's not governed by subdivision control. And so we have, do we have the same right to amend those with the same 48-hour notice for a public meeting?
Yes, I'd, I'd have to say yes. So yes, if, if you enacted them, however, whatever process you did to enact them would be the same process to amend them.
Okay. So we, we basically at that time adopted the dimensional requirements for industrial zoning. So I'd like to propose, or I move that we, the Planning Board lowers the lot coverage to 25% to mirror our residential lot coverage requirements. Secondly, to remove the ability for density bonuses, which are part of our bylaws, and to increase the setbacks to 200 feet and to increase the, the noise and visual buffering to 200 feet. Does anybody else want to add to that or discuss something related to this?
If I may, Mark?
Go ahead, Michelle.
So you're saying the density would be 25% lot coverage?
25% lot coverage totally for all buildings, parking, loading, other structures, everything that our normal bylaw accounts for. For basically, it's, it doesn't call out non-permeable, non-permeable surfaces, but that's basically the lot coverage that we'd be looking at.
And I'm sorry, what was the setbacks that you would say as well?
200-foot setbacks as well as the, the buffering is currently 100 feet. I would recommend to increase that to 200 feet.
Okay, so on a lot the size of 150 acres, we're talking about 37.5 acres.
No, remove all the wetlands because they don't count towards the, the buildable in our bylaws. So wetlands and drainage would be removed from that 150 acres.
Do we know what potential size building that would equate to?
Not without seeing, I think, at least a some sort of a proposal from an engineer, because I don't know what their parking requirements would be, where it would be located for the, the length of roadways and driveways, which would be all part of that lot coverage. It, it's hard to say. I mean, it would just be taken a guess that if the, the acreage was reduced between the wetlands and drainage structures and other things that don't allow for the buildable, you're probably close to 100 acres. So 25% of that would be 25 acres of lot coverage.
That's still pretty high. Large, large amount of area.
Yeah, but I, I don't think that you could, and Amy, you could probably clear up the way I'm going to say this. You can't have a zone, which, and my action here is because this zone, we do have one zoning freeze already with one subdivision plan. So we will have to act on that one property, but you can't change these rules and regulations to make it unbuildable. You have to have it so that it's, it still has some ability for the applicant to it, it nullifies this. If you try to make rules and regs that make it unbuildable.
So none of this, nothing you're doing tonight will, will impact the hospital project, if that's if that's, if that's the project you're referring to. And then the other thing is that we really, you really cannot make rules and regulations to stop a project that is, you know, without a doubt, we, that's just, that, that would not be reason, that would not be considered reasonable in, in court. So so what we have here is we have the DO District right now, which allows, it's, it has to be a minimal of 25 acres, correct?
Yep.
So you have to consider any property that has 25 acres. And I mean, I guess you could assume that some of that acreage would be wetland because, you know, it's Lakeville. You guys have a lot of wetlands. But we can, you, you cannot base your regulations off of a, a project that that might be coming, might be coming in front of you. And again, any, any preliminary subdivision plan that's been filed would be subject to the freeze. So it would not, these, any changes to the regulations would not really impact that project.
I think we'll go ahead. I'm sorry, if, if I, if I can, just ask a question. By changing it though to the 25% mark that you're recommending shouldn't be an issue anywhere legally because it puts it in line with residential coverage, correct?
Amy?
I, I think so, definitely, definitely, Nora. I, Ms. Klein, I'm sorry. I definitely think that, that that is a reasonable relation. Okay. We, we have a relation that, that we have something to say. No, we're doing this because of, because of this. I, I think that's definitely reasonable. Yep.
Okay.
Peter, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't. I just ran some numbers real quick. That's what I was doing. Yeah, I, everything makes total sense to me. So I understand, I understand what we're trying to do, but I understand the legal aspect of it as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Michelle?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure that it's something that's not going to be of a negative impact based on that, those dimensions and size. I know we had talked about this last year, reviewing DO with the residents. I know we, you know, haven't gotten around to it. It's been too long. And I just think, you know, whatever we can do to alleviate.
Yeah, but Michelle, I think by, by making it on par with what we have for residential gives me a greater level than, than not.
15. Let me try this. Okay. Okay. Yeah. So so if I may, Mr. Chair, so looking at your looking at your dimensional chart, which is Section 5.1 of the zoning bylaw, essentially, the lowest lot coverage is 25%. And that's, that's the, that's on par with residential. So business is 50%, industrial is 50%, industrial B is 50%. So we, there's, we have a, we, we do have a relation to the, to 25% because that is what residential is. To go lower than that, we, we need, we need to have
Might be considered arbitrary.
Right, unless we had some, some, some support for that. You know, that, but I don't know what that would be because the lowest number right now is 25.
Okay.
Mark, can I ask a question real quick?
Go right ahead, Peter.
200 feet for the noise and visual buffering, that's when the noise and visual buffering begins. Like, say, we were using a berm system, or say, somebody was going to design a berm. It would begin at 200 feet. It wouldn't. Just to clarify, I know that we may get into a situation where we'll be dealing with like, you know, right to the numbers. So that would be the beginning of any noise buffering?
When you say beginning, I guess you're confusing me. But so to clarify, my understanding of it is from the outer perimeter lot line, where it would abut an adjacent property.
Yep.
They would be required to have 200 feet of buffering into their own property from the lot line in.
And, and so that, that on your regulations right now is, is 100 feet, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, so that's under 7A, Mr. Conroy.
Okay.
And so that would change from 100 feet to 200 feet.
Yep. Which is not unreasonable to say with the magnitude of a project that we, we could do that and it wouldn't be arbitrary.
Okay, thank you.
That would be, that would be my opinion, but
Yep.
Sometimes my opinion is not accepted.
Jack, do you have any input?
I, you know, I agree with everything that Amy has said. I guess my only thought would be that I would not want to do anything that would discourage future commercial development. That's all.
Yeah. Well, this is a little bit outside of commercial. I mean, this is real big stuff. So we still have plenty of regular business zoning and other industrial zoning as well. So
Okay, that's fine.
It's totally going to discourage it. Well, I mean, we, we've made a motion to remove the district tonight. That's going to discourage it a whole lot more than increasing buffers and
Mark?
Reducing some lot coverage. Mark Resnick, go ahead.
Yeah. So at the last meeting, and maybe even previously, we've talked about maybe this summer spending some time looking at the DoD zoning, as well as perhaps these rules and regs. And to look at, you know, identifying locations where it would be deemed more acceptable to have some major industrial development. And so I, even though you're making some, proposing some changes here, you know, I think it would be wise to continue to look at that in the summer, over the summer, to see if we couldn't refine this DoD with the limited amount of industrial land long term. You probably don't want to have such a small use of land in, in appropriate areas. In other words, by limiting it to only 25% lot coverage in appropriate areas is, is overly strict. But in inappropriate areas, it's, it's fine. So
Yeah, and
You see what I mean? Yeah.
I, I do. And I, I think from my experience with this, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but so on some of these regulations, the Planning Board would have the ability to waive them or reamend them to favor a project that we may have felt is favorable if something came in.
You have the ability, you, you have the ability to waive them and you have the ability to amend them.
So, Mark?
Reasoning behind, the reasoning behind waiving and the reasoning behind amending would be would be whatever that reason is at that time. So I, I, you know, we still have this, you know, arbitrary and capricious argument out there, so we, we just wanted to, I just want to make sure that, but yes, in my opinion, you have the ability to waive things and you have the ability to amend these.
Thank you. So, Mark, I think to, to your point, I, I don't disagree that it could be revisited and probably improved upon a bit. And I, I certainly would be open to listening to that, but I think for, for tonight's sake, I think, you know, unless the board has a different intention, I, I guess I would stay on this path until, and to not eliminate what we're doing tonight just to hold off until summer to make a different change. What do you think, Peter?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think, I think with what we proposed, it's, it's the right time, so.
Okay. So I guess I'm going to restate that I'd like to make a motion to amend the dimensional requirements of the Development Opportunities District in which we would lower the lot coverage to 25%, remove the ability to have density bonuses, increase setbacks to 200 feet, and increase buffering to 200 feet.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle? Jack?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Motion, oh, myself, I vote aye. Excuse me? So motion carries unanimously and I think that concludes what we had on the agenda for tonight. We do have a lot of the public here, I guess I would welcome any comments from them, if anybody would like to make any comments on what the Planning Board did, did here tonight. That said, thank you. Do any other Planning Board members have anything they'd like to add?
Mark, the only thing I'd like to add, I, I think this is an important first step to take. I, there's a lot of work that Planning Board is going to have to do with Select Board between now and a town meeting. And I just keep, I just believe we need to be as transparent as possible with updates in the meetings to let the public know just bullet point how it's progressing.
Yep, and I, I would hope that we have a lot of attendance. I apologize for tonight's meeting being remote. It was sort of a quickly noticed, or, or, yeah, well, it was shortly noticed from Tuesday because we wanted to get this stuff on the agenda as quick as possible. Tonight's not our regular meeting night. And I would like to make the announcement at this time that our next meeting is April 28th at 7:00 PM. That should be an in-person meeting at the Lakeville Police Station, so if anybody would like to attend, you're more than welcome to come in. I'm not sure what's going to be the agenda at this point. I'm sure that Mark, we can, we'll, we'll work that out in the coming days and it'll be posted usually around Tuesday at 4 o'clock, I think it gets posted. So if there is no other business, Michelle, go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions. So I wanted to ask, is Mark Resnick still looking like he will be able to have the posting for the public hearing on D O by tomorrow? I think that's what he said last week.
Oh, for the, the new public hearing?
Yes.
That will probably again be toward the end of next week, it'll be out.
It, it needs to go to the Select Board.
Yeah.
The Select Board then has under your bylaw and under, and under the statute. The article goes to the Select Board, the Select Board then sends it right back to you.
And then it gets posted?
And then, and then you choose a date and that date goes, that date goes in the paper, yep, with the, with the 14 day notice, yep.
Thank you. Mark, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I did announce our next meeting was April 28th, but I, now I recall there was a posting issue with that that we had to repost the public hearing.
Yes.
Because that meeting room was taken, so do you know if our location has changed or if we'll have to do a remote meeting for that meeting?
Yes, our location has changed to the library.
Okay. Gallery room.
However, we have re-noticed the hearing to make sure that it's, is specific, so the public hearing on the current zoning articles that were, will be on the warrant in, at the May Town Meeting will be on Thursday, May 12th at the police station.
And so we'll have just regular business at this coming?
Next week will be regular business, that's correct.
Thank you. John Jenkins, I see your hand up. Would you like to say something?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I, I just had one question, with the proposed changing, changes to the D O D that you're talking about implementing now or shortly, will those changes become effective for the purchase and sale and the requested D O D for the Lakeville Country Club? Will it affect that? Or are they already grandfathered in, so to speak?
So, Amy, to bring you up to speed, we, we have a subdivision plan for another property in town that the towns put to town meeting to see if they wanted to purchase or not. I don't know if that'll happen, but the applicant again put in a subdivision plan to freeze the zoning of the Development Opportunities District. So I guess Mr. Jenkins' question is, with the amendments we made to our dimensional requirements tonight, would that affect that property or do they grandfather to the previous zoning where that's a rule and regulation, not, the zone still exists?
Yeah. So, so that's not as clear as the zoning. So the, if they filed a preliminary subdivision plan for whatever property is shown on that preliminary subdivision plan, that property is, get, is entitled to an eight-year freeze with regard to the zoning bylaws use and dimensional requirements. Because you, your bylaw allows you to enact rules and regulations that that affect dimensional requirements. It would be most likely that the dimensional changes that you made tonight would not affect them because it all ties back to the bylaw that allows you to make those changes and the bylaw was frozen as of the day that they filed that preliminary subdivision plan with the town clerk.
Okay. Michelle?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I do have a couple of other questions. So if the site plan was filed by the current owner, not by the potential buyer, how does that work, Amy? Does it freezes the zone for the seller as well as the buyer?
Yeah, it freezes, it's the property, not who files it.
And so then, go ahead.
Oh, no, so I'm just, I just, it's, it's the property that get, that's, that is subject to the freeze. So if the property sells or gets transferred or it's the property that's subject to the freeze, not the applicant.
Okay, even if it's a special permit that they're trying to freeze the zoning under?
Mm-hmm, but it's the zoning, it's whatever's in the zoning bylaw as of the day that they filed that with the town clerk is, it's frozen for eight years.
So I watched last night's meeting and, and Mark had a good question, and I guess I was surprised by the answer, and I was hoping maybe you could clarify. If the town has to recognize that site plan, which sounds like it was just a map with a line drawn around it without any actual plan, what's that?
It's not a site plan, it's a subdivision.
A prelim, a preliminary subdivision plan.
So if, if the town has to recognize that plan as, you know, simple as it was, just a line drawn around the property, can the town also recognize that the current owner is changing the use of that property from Chapter 61 protection and, and move forward with a fair market assessment?
So, so the Chapter 61 and, or 61A and any kind of value of the land has nothing to do with the zoning. The zoning, if they filed a preliminary subdivision plan, the zoning is frozen as of the date they filed that with the town clerk. Now, the, the statute says that they have to, within seven months, file a definitive subdivision plan, so therefore a preliminary plan is a, it's exactly what it's called, it's a preliminary plan, which is why the statute requires, they only have seven months to file a definitive plan. As to ownership and right of first refusal and, you know, the 61A tax, you know, that, none, none of that impacts 40A, Section 6, which allows for this freeze. In my opinion.
Thank you.
This is definitely an unusual situation. I will say.
Do you know of any other opinions, just devil's advocate, like, are there any other cases that you could reference that would maybe?
No, I can only reference a case where the preliminary plan that was filed, the, you know, the Planning Board alleged that the preliminary plan was not adequate and the court held that the preliminary plan is exactly that, it's preliminary, and so it, it can be pretty bare bones, but I, I don't know of any, there would be no reason why 61A or right of first refusals or anything would come in because ownership does not have any impact on zoning.
I'm gonna do my best, but Colleen Carcio?
Yep, good try. Can you give us the date that that preliminary subdivision plan was filed with you?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, it was filed two days ago.
Wow, so that means seven months from two days ago, a revised or a permanent plan has to be in place.
No, seven months from the day we vote on that plan, I think, or, or look at that plan if I'm not correct. Amy, correct me.
Seven months from the plan proposal.
So I've got a, sorry, I gotta pull out my chapter book here, which was holding up my laptop. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's seven months from the day that it's filed with the town clerk. I actually still use books, which is
No, that's good.
It just, it just shows you my age, I think. Okay, so that is, so it is separate freeze, okay, respectively. Okay, so it, so it's a preliminary plan followed within seven months by a definitive plan is submitted to the Planning Board for approval under subdivision control law and written notice of such, such submission has been given to the city or town clerk. So it's when, it's when it was filed, so from two days ago.
So November 19th would be a definitive plan in hand? That's seven months from yesterday, or two days ago, yeah, okay. Is the public have access to this preliminary plan?
It's a public document.
Where would I find it?
The Planning Board or the, well, they only need to give written notice to the town clerk, so the Planning Board would have it.
Yeah, it's, it's in our office at Town Hall.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I believe that concludes our business tonight, so I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.